I'll this meeting to order, all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
On my favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion is carried. Open forum, if there's anybody that would like to come up. All right, we're on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes, approval of the bills and purchase orders, approval of the investments. And then there's two donation resolutions. Resolution number 2025-18, a donation from the Roving Hillbilly Snowville Club in the amount of $500 to Melrose Fire Department. And the second one is resolution number 2025-19, a donation in the amount of $10,000 from Magnify Financial towards the Melrose Fire Department ladder truck. There's also a police officer step increase, and then there's a gambling resolution for the Melrose Lions. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I told you kids I wasn't going to make it too long for you. So we're onto our presentation. To the Minnesota High School Knowledge Bowl State Champions. So I want to first say congratulations, we're really glad you're here. Like I said to you before, it's nice to have some state champions that has to be, you know, physical activity using your smarts and your wisdom.
That's physical.
That's, I was going to say that's a lot more than anything else. So we're actually honored to have you here and just like to have your coach talk about your season and everything that's been happening.
All right, thanks. The season, where do we start, huh? Back in November, we get organized, December, we had our first meet, we went to North Branch, that was a great meet, second place. We compete against during the season, Knowledge Bowl's three tiers, there's A, double A, and triple A. When we get to state, we're double A. But during the season, everybody plays together because that's just the way they do it, due to geography and so forth. So we played against what would be mostly 3A teams in the competitions because they tend to be at the top of the list, and Melrose was there as well. The lowest we finished at any invitational meet, and an invitational meet would have probably 50 to 65 teams there, would have been fourth. We won three of those, we were second a couple times, third a couple times. Our conference, we dominated. We were first and second in varsity in the conference, and our JV was second as well. And fourth, I believe, if I remember right. So the future looks good as well. This is fortunately our fifth year in a row at the state tournament. And so it was also kind of cool because we had alumni there from some of those teams, as well as the 2017 team and at the state meet, which, as a coach of all those years, I thought that was pretty cool. This is our second state championship, we won in 2023. We were third last year, and we came back with our first this year. And we have at least two from the main five that went that will be junior, or they are juniors, so they'll be available for next year's state team, right guys? Okay. Just a little bit about the state tournament, they do a fabulous job. We're at Craig's and Brainard, and they do a banquet, you know, it's a dress up affair, really nice meal, they introduce all the teams from all the regions, we're all in one spot. And after that's over, the pressure starts a little bit because we get changed, get organized, and then they'll take their written test. And the written test is 60 questions, multiple choice, and they take it as a team. And then we sit and wait for them to score it, and they have to score all of those, and we wait. And pretty soon we got the score, and it was 46 of 60. They thought they had done horribly. The highest score was Edina with 50. The next highest score was Melrose with 46 out of the 48 teams there. So that was pretty cool. But then in the morning, it was even better because they'd found a mistake and we had 47. So that put us in first place in 2A, and we went against Park Christian and Albany in that first round, we had 47 going in, they had 43 and 42. And this is my 28th year coaching Knowledge Bowl, and I haven't been in this situation before where we started in the lead, and all we did was kept spreading the margin and spreading the margin. We didn't lose any round, there wasn't even anybody came close to beating us in a round. We scored 15, 15, 15, 14, 14, and there was 111, so they got disciplined a little bit for letting somebody score a double digit against us. Just kidding. Otherwise, I believe seven or eight was the highest. And that just is, you don't see that, top rooms at state should be 12, 15, 18, you know, it should be all tight like that, you don't see that. And speaking of that, there's wonderful internet, suppose I have Mr. Hoyt's message here, just a second. What is the largest margin of victory in Minnesota State Knowledge Bowl Class 2A history? The largest margin of victory in Minnesota State Knowledge Bowl Class 2A history occurred in 2025 when Melrose secured first place with a score of 127 and a half points, finishing 32 and a half points ahead of the second place team Albany, which scored 95 points. This 32 and a half point lead stands as the widest margin recorded in Class 2A state finals history. So hats off to you guys. Just to give you a little bit more clue on that as far as scores go, we had the 127.5, and then Albany was 95 with second, Glencoe Silver Lake 94 and a half with third, Park Christian fourth, 94 and a half, so they tied and had to have a playoff. And fifth was Marshall Duluth with 93 and a half. So there's only a point and a half between second and fifth, but 32 and a half points between first and second. And as Mr. Hoyt pointed out at the pep fest the other day, I don't know if it's because it was Albany or not, they're not watching, are they? Albany was second, which was 32 points from the bottom, but they were 32 and a half points behind first.
Wow.
So the future looks good. We had 28 out for Knowledge Bowl this year, that was 912. Mr. Hoyt, how many middle school?
We had about 20 from fifth through eighth.
Fifth through eighth grade, and I think almost all of them were out on the gym floor the other day for the pep fest making a human tunnel for the state championship team, so. It's a great opportunity for the kids, great opportunity for all of us representing Melrose. And I guess we'll look forward to another year. Anybody have any questions or?
No, congratulations, we're really proud of you and exciting to see what comes to the future for all of you. So, yes, we just have a little certificate and just a little gift that we have for all of you, so Mark will read your name coming up, I'll give it, we'll give it to you. And then what we'll do is we'll just take one picture in front here and let you out of here, okay?
Ramona?
So I think we'll come over here and then line. Do you want a bigger picture, Joe? No, stay up here.
Lydia?
Come right here.
Congratulations. Derek? Malgai? Congratulations. Andrew? Congratulations. Eric?
So yeah, if the council, we can squeeze in and take a couple pictures with you, then we'll let you go. Yeah, coaches should come on in also.
Coaches?
Actually, we're going to have a quiz for you. You're getting back next year.
Tony, you better make sure we know the answers. Thank you. Yeah, I can take.
Good job, Tony.
All right. I don't know what I did. So Carol, my expectations is that you put then big bold letters how much we beat Albany by, okay?
I think next year, Tony had a good idea, he had questions for me.
Perfect. All right, Chief Mouse?
Good evening, our March report for 2025, in our traffic area, we had 26 citations, 72 verbal warnings one morning, we had 277 calls requests for service, last year was 245, so a little bit of an increase there. And we ended on ICR 772, last year was 858, so we're still down a bit for the year. With the warmer weather, we're already seeing some of the things getting busier for us, so. 16 agency assists, floating at normal range. Something for the public, we will be starting nuisance ordinance violations for the city next week. We're about two weeks ahead of normal on that. Article was in the start post a couple weeks ago, and explaining what we look for and what the expectations are, and we've had a meeting with some city staff as well too, just to clarify some areas and get an idea of what more of the focus should be, what we should add in for the years to come, so. Any work needs to be done, we got a nice weekend coming up, on the way at it. Make my job a little bit easier next week. Any questions?
Thank you, appreciate it. See your attorney, Scott?
The only item I've got this evening is the ordinance with the mural regulations, and that's coming up in action items. Just as a reminder, it's in the agenda, but there's actually two items you'll be asked to vote on. There's the actual ordinance itself, and then there's a summary publication, so it'll be two separate votes that you'll need to take. Assuming you approve the first one. Other than that, unless you have any questions?
In the mural for one of those, it said if it didn't comply, the property owner would get notified, and they'd have to remove it, and I forget the time. Is that even true if the person who did the mural, would any of that ever fall on them? Because all of a sudden they were sold a bill of goods and the mural didn't match their vision?
The property owner is responsible.
Property owner is responsible?
All right. Sheila, Community Development Director report.
So Scott mentioned we have an action item tonight following the March 31st Planning and Zoning Meeting. We now have a public hearing set for the next Planning and Zoning Meeting on Monday, April 28th to talk about converting a static billboard to digital on the Blue Door Storage property. Whatever recommendation is made by Planning and Zoning, that'll come to you at your next meeting. The property at 406 East Main Street has now, the condemnation notices have been taken off the doors. That property has now been determined to be safe by our building official. With the roof on it, it is now structurally sound and weather tight. Work has started on the pickleball court in the Sock River Park. Also exciting happening today, and I think finishing up tomorrow, the pavilion is getting epoxy floors, which is going to make it really nice for cleanup. So anybody with graduation parties or family reunions, that'll be a nice improvement down there. Looking forward to a possible early opening of the park, we're waiting to see on the weather. We got some rain coming in, we'll see what happens, but we are seeing increased use already by the school, which is nice, there's been some softball and baseball games happening down there. The comprehensive plan is in process, we got word documents today, finally, so we can start finishing up those chapters. And I just want to extend an invitation, the Edwin Clark Historical Marker is going to have an unveiling ceremony, and that is going to be on Friday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM. So this has been an exciting project, a three-way project between the Arts Council, the Historical Society, and the city. It really is an impressive sign, I've seen it. Sign lava here in town, put it together, and we'd like to invite everybody to that unveiling. It'll be right next to Riverside Flats.
Thank you. City Engineer report.
All right, good evening, things are starting to wind up for the year here as snow's gone, we're starting to construction, talk already. We have staff in town doing concrete walkthrough to see what cracked over the winter from the new stuff was put in last year, not too bad overall, honestly, half a dozen spots. Two panels to replace out on the sidewalk near the school. Couple panels on Main Street, we'll do some work over by the bowling alley, all those things. But otherwise, we're going to have a meeting with all the project staff and walk through the entire Main Street project to talk landscaping specifically on individual homes, so they understand what needs to be done on each one, so we'll walk through them all as a group, so expect that next week or so. Otherwise, I'll be back to business.
Perfect, thank you. See Administration report.
I'm happy to report for the first time in three years, we are actually at, or we will shortly be at, full staff. That is both for the full and part-time positions, and here's the breakdown. Justin Hendricks was hired as our electric supervisor, he will be starting on April 28th, 2025. Later on the agenda, you have a recommendation to hire Matthew Host as a police officer, and he will be starting in June. Nathan Wellie is coming back for the Streets and Parks Department, so he was our seasonal worker last year, and he's coming back and he's starting June 2nd. Eli Claussen is going to be the wastewater intern, and he'll be starting June 2nd. Amy Austin, again, another action item later on, has accepted the Assistant Ambulance Coordinator position. And we have also hired a thousand-hour line apprentice Wyatt, I don't know his last name, but anyway.
Sales.
What's that?
Sales.
Yes, Wyatt Sales, so that's exciting. I mean, that is really exciting because we have not really been at full staff for quite a while, so we're very happy about that. On the state legislature side, the omnibus bill was introduced on April 4th, and while there are several areas that the city and utility are watching, on the city side, the most concerning are obviously budget reductions, we're looking at that very carefully. The governor, the House, and the Senate all have very different budgets and targets for reducing spending. There has been discussion about reducing local government aid, so we will continue to monitor this issue. Housing proposals, I've talked about this before in front of the council, and that is, there's several different ones out there. Our fear is that it's going to get buried in the Ways and Means Committee, and then it's going to be a bit harder to extract it out. So we're really watching those this week, we expect an action alert actually to come out by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. The one that has sort of proceeded further than others is the Common Interest Community Reform Bill. That is Senate File 1750 and the House Companion Bill, which is House File 1268. These have advanced through the committee process. The main concerns that we have are Article 2, Section 2, which is talking about local government preemption. The provision would prohibit cities from requiring the inclusion of private common areas, potentially forcing municipalities to accept property or infrastructure intended to be private as public property that would end up getting managed by the cities. Don't want to be doing that in cases where the roads are substandard or they're narrower, they aren't going to work for our plows, that type of thing. So we're watching that along with, again, the rest of the housing provisions that are out there right now. The other thing that is probably more on the utility side, but I think is important to note, is there is House File 28 and Senate File 1393 would exempt backup generation for data centers from the certificate of need process, even if it exceeds the 50 megawatt threshold. We don't think the House will pass such language, but we're just not sure. Our bigger concern is that we do not want data centers to be allowed to then directly enter into the marketplace and essentially compete with us as the utility, so that's kind of the one we're watching now. So I will keep you posted as we get through, as we get through the legislative session.
All right, so we are on action items, ordinance number 41625 and ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1989-1-A has amended adopted by reference to Chapter 153 of the Melrose City Code, amending Section 700, signed regulation ordinance, and then the summary will be after.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 31st for giving consideration to the creation of a mural ordinance for the city of Melrose. The Planning and Zoning Commission has proposed the ordinance which was included in your packet. Specific to Mark's question earlier, the ordinance really speaks to building owners to apply for the interim use permit when they want a mural on their property. It creates a conditional use permit process with a public hearing after an application has been received. Some key points are safety concerns, making sure that whatever the mural is, it doesn't mimic traffic signals or has got electronic or flashing lights or anything like that, making sure there's no profanity or derogatory language. The maximum coverage recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission is 100% of one side of a building, so you can't extend to a second side creep around a building. Murals cannot face Main Street, and they are designated to be located in a C1 commercial downtown area, not in residential areas. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends that no more than 30% of any mural contain words, letters, or numbers. The design should be reflective of the community and its history with a focused theme, and there's also requirements for maintenance and declaration of a nuisance once they start to look bad. So the planning memo and supporting documents were included in your packet. As Scott mentioned, there'd be two motions tonight, one for the ordinance itself and one for the summary publication. I'm sure Scott or myself would be happy to take any questions you have on the ordinance, which is being proposed.
And I think one thing that covers it, where we're talking about the property owners, I guess unlike last year, if they're painting on your building, maybe watch and see what they're doing, and if you don't like it, stop them right there. That might be a good thing to be part of, right?
You need to present the design. If it's approved, that's the design that goes on the building.
Correct.
But if it all falls on the property owner, there's no liability to the person doing the work, how do you reprimand them? These people are transients, they're here today, they've gone tomorrow. There's no effective way to hold them. The property owner is here, so we're going to burn them out then. If you want this, you've got to be involved, and you have to be prepared to maintain it. That's another target is with the application on the next one. I think someone that comes in and proposes a mural to a property owner, the property owner shouldn't get stampeded or buckled because they're going to have to fill out the application. The application's going to have to meet requirements, there's got to be a hearing, a assembly, and it comes back to the council, so if you don't have, yeah, that sounds good. And C1 is commercial property only, is that correct?
Commercial downtown, yep.
So is residential exempt?
Resident, no murals in residential neighborhoods.
So if someone wanted to paint like a silhouette of something on their garage doors, that is not permitted?
They could apply for a variance, but no, it is not permitted.
And that's a change with this, or that's always been?
We have never had a mural ordinance of any sort. And I did clarify with Scott that if anybody wants to repaint, like for example, if there's an existing mural, and you want to cover it up and paint a new mural, you still have to come before a permit. Just because there is a mural, any new mural or a paint over with a new mural would have to come for a permit also.
As far as the existing murals go, do we, should we start up, and this isn't something we need to decide tonight or anything, but should we start a campaign to help business owners if they would like to get them covered up or something to that effect, should we talk about that at a meeting, like the next meeting? Just to see how many contributors there would be to help out, to get that done?
Yeah, and maybe some conversations with the existing owners to see if they are interested in.
Right.
Yeah, or maybe it might just be as easy as if there are some business owners that would like some help, you know, we can put it out there or something on their behalf.
I have talked to a couple of the original donors, and they were pretty disgusted with what happened, so they were saying, well, I mean, all if you're doing a project, because we'll help fund covering up of that or whatever, so.
All right. So we're just making a motion to consider adopting this ordinance, so I have a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and since a pass, so a motion to approve the official title and summary of the ordinance number 04162025. Can I get a motion to approve it?
So move. Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. 2025 Street Capital Improvement Project.
All right, we opened bids yesterday on a 2025 street improvement project, which includes Fifth Avenue, A Street, and City Center Parking Lot. Fantastic bids, seven mitters, a little bid, $334,437.31 from Joe Riley Construction out of Morris. It's been a while since I've worked with those guys, but they are certainly making their presence known in the area a little bit more now, so. This is a progress work in Sock Center relatively recently, so. All in all, pretty good things, solid bids, we used a quote that we had for our estimate from the City Center Parking Lot, and we're 40,000 less than that quote for last call. So all good things on my mind, I don't see any reason why we would want more.
Perfect. Is there any questions or anything? Okay, can I get a motion to consider awarding the bid to Allied Blacktop?
So move.
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then the 2025 Seal Code Project?
That was Joe Riley Construction.
Or Joe, oh, I'm sorry, Joe Riley Construction. Yep, Joe Riley. That's what I have on D. A motion for the Joe Riley.
So.
Okay, second.
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So this one is the 2025 Seal Code Project or the Street Capital Improvement Project?
Seal Code.
Okay, so now we're on the Seal Code, so now we're on C. And then can I get a motion to consideration to awarding the bid?
So move.
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. D, Police Officer hire?
Yes, we're looking for council approval or recognition of hiring Matthew Host. We did things slightly different than we have in the past, we, applications were still normal and interviews were still normal, but we did make a conditional offer to Mr. Host who has not graduated school yet. All of his grades, at least what's been proposed so far, have been adequate, so we don't foresee that being an issue, but another condition that was added was contingent upon passing his licensing or his post-test to the state as well. Something that was, like I said, we haven't done that in the past, haven't needed to do that in the past. Other candidates were favorable, there was just some concerns in some small areas that we felt they're holding on, that extra few weeks until this candidate graduated was worth the time, so that's our recommendation for the time being. We'll open, see that things pan out that way, things have already been scheduled, that we'd normally do psychological, physicals, all those sorts of things, so we'll have, basically just waiting on a test result will be kind of the idea, and then it'll be whatever day, as quick as possible, get him in the car and get started, so.
All right, can I get a motion with a contingent upon passing the post?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Then Assistant Ambulance Coordinator position hire for Amy Austin?
Yep, so interviews were conducted for the Assistant Ambulance Coordinator position on April 8th. Ambulance Coordinator Gina Egert is requesting approval to be given to the appointment of Amy Austin as the Assistant Ambulance Coordinator to the ambulance department. The wage will be according to the wage schedule for the Assistant Coordinator position.
Can I motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Streets Park Worker Temporary Seasonal?
Historically, the city has hired a seasonal part-time worker to assist with the summer workload. Streets Park Supervisor Andrew Rusling is requesting approval to again hire a temporary seasonal worker for 32 hours a week. Nathan Welly, who filled the position in the summer of '24, is going to be coming back for '25. Mr. Welly will be available beginning June 2nd.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Okay, old business, Parks and Rec Board appointment.
So the city council at its February 20th meeting expanded the park board from five to seven members, keeping the seats on the board held by the MADA and Planning and Zoning reps. The Planning and Zoning Commission has appointed Dave Burschite to continue his service on the park board as its representative. MADA has appointed Joe Weasty to serve as its representative. Applications were solicited from the public by posting the notice on the city's Facebook page, website, and publication on the Star Post on Wednesday, March 5th, for the two new at-large seats. Two applications were received, Julie Baum and Justin Freeler, both submitted completed applications.
Ask that the council give consideration to appointing them to the park board.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Chicken discussion.
At the March 20th meeting, the council discussed backyard chickens, which were not allowed in the city of Melrose. Staff was directed to provide additional information about backyard chickens and the spread of avian flu. In your packet, there was guidance from Stearns County Environmental Service, the American Animal Hospital Association, and the University of Minnesota Extension Service. The spread comes from wild birds when they are attracted to the areas where backyard chickens are being raised, or there are not sufficient biosecurity precautions taken with clothing, footwear, et cetera. Council to continue discussion and determine whether or not to proceed with a change to the city's ordinance, or keep the current policy of no backyard chickens in place.
I know, Tony, you said we're playing politics a little bit, but I'm a no on this one. I just don't see with the community and all of the turkey and stuff, I just, plus chickens, even if you do have a rooster moratorium where it's not allowed, chickens are still allowed. If somebody had a coop right next to your garage, next to your window, I don't think you would enjoy it either, so that's my two cents.
I was just entertaining it, I wanted more input. I had lots of calls from producers, from, a couple from residents.
Just remind, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. The, the one producer in particular kind of was more or less in agreement with me that backyard chickens aren't really a threat to, he didn't think it was a threat to spreading it throughout the poultry industry. I'm not going to disclose any name on that, but he said he's got, every one of his neighbors has backyard chickens out there, and they're free-range chickens, so. But anyway, besides that, with the regulations around the industry, and he also said within two miles, if there's any chicken or bird or whatever that's discovered within two miles of their farms or feed mills, there's some weird lockdown regulations, and it's just, it's an added layer of stress and risk to them, so. Plus the feedback from residents, who were, the only feedback I got was people that were not in favor of it because of the potential smells. They didn't say anything about the noise, but, so all in all, I can't support it either, so come to the same conclusion. But thought we should talk about it, just because.
And my opinion, in research and stuff and talking to my husband, who thinks he knows everything, I think we made that note on, anyways, just that, you know, if you look into Canada and their live poultry stuff, they don't, they're not killing their birds, you know, and we have birds flying all over, from United States to Canada, whatever, so. But I do not support it for the mere fact that we already have an issue in our city with other things being messy in people's yards. And I just feel like that's going to be another issue of caretaking. So.
For my own justification, this can be brought back at any time though, right? If somebody made a motion, they could get back onto it, if there was like a huge petition or something, if there was a lot of demand?
Yeah, and there's nothing to vote on on this, it's just, you know, old business. And I really wasn't, you know, I was going to say I was lambasted, I guess I was chicken-basted by, you know, all the poultry producers in the area. I did even visit with the one that you were visiting with, and his partner was very much against it. I understand people's rights, people's wants with this, with potential prices of eggs and stuff, but I really am concerned more about if they ever did a lockdown on a feed mill, they're up a crick. There's nothing they can do if they get quarantined as a mill. So I do not want to put any jeopardy on that. And again, like I said last time, and we had this, when the old plant was going, when the bird flu came out, we had to redirect traffic for Melrose females so they couldn't cross-contaminate any potential, so. Now for me, it's a no right now, it's a hard no right now for me. Maybe in the future, future councils can decide this, but for now, I think the issue is closed for now, so. So we're on the informational items?
Nope.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, storm debris.
New business.
Sorry about that. Chief, I didn't want you to have to speak on this.
Oh, thank you. So just to give you update, last night, the fire department went out to Mayor's Pit, and we burnt what was out there, which was quite a bit, but within eight hours, I went out there this morning, and barely nothing left. So I shouldn't say barely, most of it's gone. So I was talking with Colleen the other day, thinking snow's melting, we need to get a plan in place so that we're not sitting in the city hall at the fire department after a storm, figuring out what are we going to do with all this, this stuff, so. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to drive through the mayor's pit at all, but if you haven't, I'd recommend talking with Sean, he's been my main contact over there, they have a nice, two entrances, one entrance can go in, one entrance go out there. They, he talked to with him last night about flattening the area that they were at now, and just beefing it up and preparing the site for potential storm debris drop off. That's going to be my proposal. Where it was last year was, we knew, I knew was a concern was the power lines above it. You cannot burn there just because Excel will not allow you with their power lines right there. So I looked around to see other sites around the community that we could use to drop off, and that one ultimately is the best spot that I came up with just because of access. Mayor's can, talking with Sean, they can shut both entrances down, so if we open it up for a week, you can put roadblocks in front of there, put big stones in front of there so that people can't drop additional stuff off of there, so. I'm coming with the recommendation that I think the city needs to work with Mayor's to have a nice rental lease agreement, whatever it is, to have, be able to use that as a storm drop off. No issues with us burning it, no residents around there for the smoke, because it's going to smolder for probably a good two weeks, three weeks with some of the sizes of those tempers, but. So what I came to talk about, research, questions, comments?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good decision, Chief, I think you would know that better than anybody else. Would we be able to write something up to help, you know, like liability to protect Mayor's, so something, we can do something for them to protect them for being gracious to let us put our stuff there and think.
And this, this is only for big events.
Big events.
So we want to make sure the public understands, you can't just drive out there and dump.
Exactly, it's got to be after some, some major, some major storm, like you said, bigger event, because last year was the tornado, the year before that, we had the wind storm, so it was nice, we had the industrial park out there, the freeway's still relatively close with the smoke, and I was a little concerned about that, talking with the street guys, but we made it work. But yeah, it has to be after a major storm that the city opens this up, and there's group prep, because Mayor's wants to clean up the area a little bit, from what Sean said, and yeah, they're just monitoring it and doing what they want. But I'm going to leave you guys up with that lease agreement, what that looks like, but they would reserve, he said they would re-reserve that spot all summer long before the, for us to do it, and then the department would come either during the winter months or next spring to burn whatever's there.
Yeah.
Lot cheaper than shipping.
Has to be some sort of lease, though.
Yep.
Agreement, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I think, you know, it would be a good idea to write something up and get it done, and work with, with the Mayor's and make sure that we accommodate them too.
So yeah, like I said, I, unless you guys all have a different area around town, that's relatively close, that's fairly close, a nice traffic flow for in and out, and after this, we're going to drive down there, just see how the burning's going, because they actually took care of during the day, pushing the pile closer and burning it even more, so that's, we feel they've got to have some type of compensation for that, because the city staff does not have to do that anymore, they'll handle that too, he said so.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. Well, thank you, Chief, for the hard work, appreciate it. All right, I do have one last thing, Sheila, or Colleen, should we mention some, in the informational items, we have the Utility Commission meeting minutes, the schools and conferences, but the Arts Festival, is that going to happen before our next council meeting?
Yes.
So maybe if we can just tell the public a little bit about what's going on, just to prep them, and maybe so everybody knows about it.
The Second Annual Festival of the Arts will be happening. It's opening up on Wednesday, April 30th at noon, so it'll be Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday morning. As I mentioned earlier, the Edwin Clark Sign Reveal is part and parcel of the Festival of the Arts. They will be here at City Center. This year, they are expanding to our meeting rooms B and C. They will be in the lobby, and the quilts are still happening down in the arts, or down in the senior center. This year, I think they're adding live music, the authors are coming back, even more authors than last year, and so we are happy to welcome them back to City Center, base painting for the kids and all the things.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.